Lord, give you thanks for another opportunity, Father, to be here, to try to do what's right by citizens, Lord. Accomplish their will, do what's best for this town. Pray that you be with us, Lord, and give us wisdom and guidance. And that anyone who's on their way, Lord, that you grant them travel and mercy, and grant everyone travel and mercies that's here on the way back home. Amen. I call this meeting to order. Go ahead and be blessed.
We lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just for us.
Roll call. Okay, I'll do the roll call. I'm here. Councilman Terry.
Here.
Councilman Harold.
Here.
Councilman Mayor. That's it. Councilman McCoon.
Here.
And, oh, that's wrong. Clerk. And then time to turn. It's a good start. All right. Additions, deletions, changes. Well, let me say this too. We have, our attorney has to leave in half an hour, about six. I'm gonna ask you, right, I'll keep track too, for a ten minute warning. Whenever you leave, you all are gonna go into adjournment meeting.
So your adjournment, if you, like, when you adjourn, you have one thing on your agenda to talk about, the one agenda item, which is the resignation of the town clerk. So essentially, you all are gonna try to decide. I'm assuming that you wanna move forward with that or trying to do that? So, like, once you figured, once you figured out what you're gonna do in that regard, like, technically, the meeting's over. Like, the chair couldn't unilaterally, under Robb's rules of order, the chair just can't unilaterally adjourn the meeting. But the meeting, except under the circumstances where the agenda items have, has concluded, whatever the conclusion is. So then, like, the meeting just can't go on and on because it wasn't even, like, nothing's on the agenda.
And I could, okay, I should have brought the resolution. So there's a resolution that says that the presiding officer can adjourn the meeting.
Okay, okay. I just won't, I just won't pull up Robb's rules of orders. But if that's the case, I mean, you all have, it's not a big lot on the agenda, so you probably cover this in half an hour.
I, I think so. I think so. Okay, additions.
What resolution would that be?
Uh, that's the one that was amended about the voting. You can vote. Addition, deletions, changes, approval of the agenda. Anybody got anything? It's gotta be on topic.
Uh, I will just note at this time that I submitted a special meeting request with two items on the agenda. One was the resignation of the town clerk, and the other was mayoral powers and authority. When Rhett called to talk to me about that, uh, special meeting request, he asked for clarification on the mayoral powers and authorities. And he said that if it relates to the clerk's resignation, then it can be discussed in this meeting without it being a separate agenda item. Is that correct?
I mean, I don't know what the, as far as the mayor resigned, like, the clerk resigning, I don't know what that necessarily has to do with the mayor. But I think that maybe in the past, the mayor was hiring the clerk, or went and did a job search of the clerk, or some kind of a, you got ten people. Maybe the mayor was the person in charge of doing that. But I don't think that's the intent.
No, not without, not without being voted on.
Okay, so, um, I don't, like, what other, I guess, what other mayoral issues related to clerk with their.
Just, just what the council wants to allow him to do in her absence. So it may be nothing. That's all.
Oh, you probab-, well, here's the thing.
I can't believe that.
The, so the Florida Constitution has a dual office holding provision, meaning that you can't just, as the elected official, assign another elected official to some role, paid or unpaid, that would be considered an officer of your local government, or even another local government. Because you're not supposed to hold more than one role. So you, even if you wanted to, you couldn't say, okay, we're gonna make this person or that person the clerk, and then retain their elected official position. They would be, like, that would be a violation of the Florida Constitution.
Okay.
Yes, man?
For clarity, um, we didn't make Mr. Thomas the clerk, but we did vote to give him powers to search the tent pool and hire from the tent pool. And I don't know if we actually said the word training, but, um, that's, I included that in my special meeting request that I had sent to you.
So, so you all.
Because it becomes a bias.
I believe the assignment which I'm following.
It becomes a bias, and we've said, or I know, I've said in several meetings, that we're not getting the information to us in a timely fashion. And it seems to just be in a pocket of the mayor and the office staff. And I'm not criticizing either. I'm just trying to see what the true regulations are, and him saying he's not training them or helping them now, which is, that's just not even true.
So how normally?
And we wanna help everybody. Don't, I don't want you to misinterpret what I'm saying.
So how normally this would work is that you would all would advertise for clerk position, you would get some resumes, you would all look at the resumes and decide collectively, if there are any of those that you want to interview, then collectively, you would enter, unless you designated one person to go and do that part of it, uh, which you, you know, could do, but generally speaking, because the person's gonna work for all of y'all, you would want to all interview them, and then hopefully be on the same page regarding whomever you hire, with them going into it with the understanding that, hey, look, we want to all receive the information equally, we, which is what you should be getting. Um, so, but that's kind of the front end thing that you tell people, especially people if you're hiring someone that doesn't know, because they don't know who they're, like, they don't necessarily even know what they're doing in that job if you hire someone that's never had the job before. Um, so you kinda have to tell them on the front end. So doing it collectively is a better way to get that information to the new person, so that coming into it, they have a understanding of like, hey, here's what I'm supposed to do, or, or here's what's expected of the people who are my bosses, essentially. Because y'all are the person's boss, like, y'all collectively are their boss, but you individually aren't their boss. Like, you can't, one of, one of you can't just go to the person and say, you do this, or you do that. Because they don't work for you, they work for y'all. So you can direct them as a group on what to do, but you can, you know, there are things you, a good clerk would know, like, hey, if my boss comes to me and wants, like, me to help them find an ordinance, maybe that they're thinking that it says something or whatever, a good clerk's gonna do that because they wanna stay and get graces, right? They're not just gonna be like, you take that to the council, and then you tell the council to go vote on whether I give that to you. That's dysfunctional.
And we're confused. Okay. Um, so that's what happened last time. So there was a temp agency we were going through, where they said, hey, mayor, you go through, and you hire, you know, you choose the temp, so I chose the temp. And then, when it came to actually hiring a clerk, the council voted on who he wanted to be the clerk. So, Councilman Terry said that I said something that's not true. That's not true. What you said is not true. So.
That you haven't trained them?
What was it specifically that I said?
That you're not in here helping?
When, that's not what I said specifically. What I said specifically, what I said specifically, was that I already don't have any authorities. That's what I said. So, let's decide on the agenda and then proceed, because we haven't even made it past that point yet.
We're talking about the agenda now.
Okay.
And I'm adding, are you, are you saying for the clerk not to do, like, not research this particular ordinance?
So.
I mean, we're all, I can't say we're all. I know I'm asking Kelly or Kerry in the past to do little things, like Kerry's been, Kelly, sorry, has been involved with me today with this little yard sale thing, and I've requested emails from Amanda Dix concerning the U-Lon.
So you, you all are the employer. If all five of you, technically collectively, you're the boss. If all five of the bosses are going to the person that you hire, and all five of you are putting individual pressure on one person, eventually, that person's gonna quit. So in essence, you're not doing yourself, you're doing yourself a disservice. So while, yes, it is okay to say, hey, I'm a council member, I would like you to help me do this, but if everybody asks the person for that, and what if they're asking the person to do something competing? Like, I want you to do this, and the other person says, oh, no, I want you to do this exact opposite thing. What does the clerk do? You know what I mean? Like, so, so it's, it's a good, like, not, um, you wanna try not to, like, overwhelm one employee, because you're five people.
Sure.
With, you know, I mean, just, that's just a, that's just a real, um, like, it's hard to find quality candidates when, when that's the working environment. If that's the.
And I think it's all intertwined. I, I mean, I know that. I've never tried to put pressure, but, you know, when I want something, I want it now, but I've never said I want it now. I wouldn't do that.
It's not, it's not, it's not unusual for, to, to make requests of, like, elected officials ask the employees to, like, hey, can I get this from you? It just has to be, I mean, you just have to be mindful of the requests, I think, because if you all were asking for those, for the, one person can't do everything, and five people want them to, no matter what the, how effective they are, or how long. They'll just end up working themselves and end up wanting to quit.
And so, okay, so, so we're eleven minutes in, and we haven't decided on an agenda yet. So we have one agenda. I have resignation of the town clerk. Does it make sense to add, would it be part of the same topic to talk about the mayor's, what is mayor, mayoral authority?
I wanted to clarify, my special meeting request had on the agenda the resignation of the clerk and mayoral powers and authority. And I clarified to Rhett that that was in relation to the clerk's resignation, not in general.
But it doesn't sound like anybody's asking for any specific one person, like, like, I don't hear the mayor saying, I wanna do something extra, or something with this hiring process. Like, all of you should be equally involved in the hiring process, and all of you should have an equal say in who you hire.
He did originally, and we went with it. When Connie abruptly left, um, you know, we're all like, ugh, what do we do now? And he stepped forward, and we, I'm speaking for y'all, so, and you weren't here, but Bill, interject, if I'm speaking out of turn for you. Um, we were grateful. Bill's got a job, Monica's got a job, um, the mayor was new and gung ho about, you know, I'll do it, I'll do it. And it's just, it just hasn't, we're on the third one now, that it just hasn't really gone as well as it could.
So moving forward, did, did anything that I say ruffle anybody's feathers as far as, like, how you all, have my recommendation to you about hiring the, hiring the person, and everybody interviewing them, and everybody being engaged in dialogue with them regarding what your expectations of them are? So if that's kind of how, if that's the, the pathway in which you wanna do it, no one person, the mayor, no particular council member, would be doing something in addition. Whatever happened in the past, I wasn't a part of it, not me, I can't speak too, but, um, moving forward, it sounds like you all wanna do it the way I'm suggesting, or which sounds to be like the way you all are all interested in doing it. Like, as far as everybody's having to say, everybody wants the clerk to, you know, I think anybody that you hire is wanting to say, oh, sure, I'll, you know, I'll help you find an ordinance or whatever like that. Um, so.
And it's a lot. I, I mean, I know it's a lot.
And, and it's, um, and two, it's also hard if you hire people who haven't done it before. That's just the fact. Like, someone comes into a job, and they don't know what they're doing, you can't expect them to, like, you, I mean, you, you can't expect them to try to do on the job training and learn, but you can't treat them like an experienced staffer because they're just not, you know?
Okay, so, you know, it's.
And Lonnie, Lonnie recruited help from Legal Cities and the, um, Clerks Association and Managers Association. So, I mean, we're, we're not trying to run anybody off.
Oh, no, 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 but I'm saying, like, it, it will be, it would be, it's beneficial to hire people with experience, especially in where we are in the moment.
Okay, so additions, deletions, changes, approval of the agenda. Lords over, fair motion.
I'm making much more appropriate.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
I think he's clarified what they wanna know.
No, second. All right, all the first guy? Up with a name? Okay, up the comments. Anybody wanna say anything? No? All right, new business, resignation of town clerk discussion.
So I sent in a special meeting request so that we could all get together and talk about her resignation, authorize, uh, Kelly, our special counsel wants to do, to post the advertisement for the position, uh, what we want in that advertisement, where we want it advertised. Couple places, uh, that I think that was missed last time that probably would benefit, uh, would be, um, Legal Cities, maybe the Clerks Association, the Managers Association, they have something like that, and then the town website. I also recommend doing something like, uh, advertisement, like City Reporter, and then going to some of the big, uh, name, uh, job sites like Indeed. And if anybody else has any other recommendations for, uh, job sites, none of Indeed's.
This is just me, because I don't know, is Indeed and stuff like that free?
Yes, Indeed, I believe so. I couldn't be wrong, but I believe so.
I'm thinking you don't really have to do money ads anymore. I could be wrong with, with all the technology that there is now.
Does it make sense to report? Kelly, how much is it to do an advertisement?
A hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks. Website's free. Uh, I, I'm get, I'm assuming that those, uh, Legal Cities and stuff, I'm assuming that's free, or, or part of our membership.
I suggested that before we hired the last.
Do we want to wait?
In a meeting.
Okay, so, all right, so do we wanna, like, authorize that, wait however long, see what we get, and make a decision? Do we want to authorize express crews to send us candidates, and we can look at those as well, like, what do we, because I noticed no mention of temp agency.
Uh, I personally would like to advertise for the position with the job description listed, which includes the minimum requirements, and, uh,
Make it bigger.
I don't know that was done last time?
It was. If I remember correctly.
All right, because, uh, I knew that, uh, you know, required governmental supervisor experience, and that, some experience can qualify a substance.
I think this, when we advertise, they need to know it's a dual role clerk. She's gotta be a manager too.
Yeah.
She gotta be strong enough. These guys has got to have at least what they do. Our, our streets don't look as good as they used to.
Yes.
No.
I am.
And that's just because, in my opinion, and I'm not talking about Kerry, I like Kerry as a person, but I don't think she really understood her role in that office. Maybe she was trying to learn. That, that probably on us. But I think we, I think we need to look a little better and find somebody stronger in this job.
Yeah, so that's what's, that's, that's what's gonna happen. We're gonna either pay a lot more for a qualified applicant, and we can do that. Or we're gonna pay less for an applicant that we can train, or I said, we, that can be trained through whatever mechanism or means, or whatever, or organization. And they can get good, but if we keep running them off, we're just gonna kind of keep being in the same spot.
I'm betting that term run.
Yeah, I don't know that we run.
I don't think.
Oh, okay, that's fine. If you accept that term, I'm just going based on the four resignation letters that we've had so far. If you reject, please, please, let me finish, please. Please, please, let me finish. Please, let me finish. Please, let me finish. I, please, let me finish. I'm not talking about an investigation in progress. You brought that up. So if it's not appropriate to mention, I don't know why you would bring it up.
You just said four.
I don't know why you would bring it up if it's not appropriate to mention, because I didn't bring it up. I just mentioned the resignation letters, and you took issue with it, and you're being disrespectful in your out order. Please let me finish. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So, anyway, I agree with you, Councilman Coon, that, you know, I wouldn't put that necessarily all on clerk. But yeah, I mean, that, that's, I think the bubble we're gonna breathe, they're gonna pay someone more if we want, like, a solid, you know, solid candidate, or that's just kind of the reality of the situation.
That's what I want. I want somebody come here and do what they do, and they just got adapted to this town. That's my opinion. We've not had that since Connie left.
True.
Yeah, I agree.
So I have a question on what you just said.
Wait, she has it first. Go ahead.
And I'm sorry, and I'm not criticizing whoever's been in that seat before, but I think sometimes you can't just pick from who's in the pool. You gotta wait until the pool's rich, if that, if that makes sense.
Yep, that's another option.
Because twice we just picked.
That's another option. Now, the longer we don't have a clerk, the problem with that was, the longer that we just continue to go on without a clerk, like, the more and more issues and troubles. It was, there's a lot of things the town can't do without a clerk, right? It was a matter of just, like, simple function. So, we can do that, but that's, that's what we're up against, and that's what the flip side's gonna be.
What is the clerk, what is the clerk, um, like, if you don't have anybody in that role right now, what will be lacking? In other words, do you need to appoint someone as an interim clerk to just do something that's basic, like sign checks? Does, is the clerk the only person that can do that, or is it the clerk and somebody else, and so therefore, you only don't have the clerk? These somebody else doesn't matter, because you can make the two check signatures or just.
With the checks, and I'm looking at you, I'm thinking it would go back to Kelly, got sort of expertise at making the checks, and then the two of us, um, co-sign on the checks.
Yeah, so we're.
The vice mayor and mayor.
Are added as, like, authorized signers. So, but then, even then, Kelly, now, see, now, that is gonna go back to Kelly also doing things, like covering slack traditionally, who prepares all the, like, you know, the invoice, and that's the clerk. I mean, you, you know, so, like, will Kelly do some of it? We'll talk to her prop, maybe, right, but really, that's supposed to be clear. Uh, land development coordinator, like, for signing off on any permitting, you know, et cetera, et cetera, that's the clerk. I mean, really, even preparing the agendas and the minutes, really supposed to be clerk. Yeah, and that's just like the basis, like, to think.
So some of the things that you're gonna need someone to just do in a short order, you may want to consider, like, possibly asking if she, I don't know, I mean, if she's even interested, if she says, I don't wanna do that, you know, what do you do then? But somebody has, it would seem as if somebody would have to be doing a little bit of this, just to kind of keep, keep moving the ball down the field, you know? Or just trying to keep up with just the day to day. Um, you know, land development stuff, that will probably be something that won't move quickly, without somebody in that position, because, like, no offense to Kelly, but she doesn't have a level of expertise in that. I mean, you can outsource it to, you know, maybe you can get planning council, maybe you can get another, a private planner to, like, handle stuff like that. But just to keep things going, do y'all think she would be able to be doing just, you know, those type things to be able to? And do you need to designate someone? It would seem to me like that you would. Because if you were running a corporation and the CEO quit, you're not gonna have just nobody doing the CEO part until you can find a new CEO. Like, somebody's gonna have to step in and kind of give a little bit of the day to day.
We would have to ask Kelly.
I've never been in a business where you didn't just appoint someone, and of course, they would have to accept that. And if that required additional compensation, I've been in some businesses where it did, some that didn't. But you don't, I mean, and I mean, I'm not speaking for her at all, but I've never been in a situation where someone's just said, I'm not doing it. My own fifty plus years of work experience.
Because even when you have, like, a school principal leaves, you have someone coming in, it's like, there's gotta be an appoint person.
And they might be like, oh, no, now I gotta do this, but you just do this.
Well, then part of being someone's assistant is that you may have to do some of what they do if they're not there.
We, yeah, we, we'd have to ask Kelly, that's somebody, spoke with her. I asked her that specifically, you got, you talked, you brought that up. I don't, I don't know that she's fond on that idea. I think even just as it is.
And this is not the example of you speaking for.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
I did.
Excuse me. When I spoke to her earlier, well, the first thing I said is, we're going to have to ask Kelly, but when I spoke to her earlier this week, she just spoke. Anyone can go and ask her and talk to her. I spoke to the attorney, he mentioned that, I was, hey, you know, that's all, that's fine, you wanna jack.
It's just what, I mean, a lot of times, just being honest, it's what a lot of times normally happens, like, a city manager, town manager leaves, whoever their assistant was steps in, because that's the person that's closest to knowing what that other person did.
Yeah.
But you could also hire your, you know, you may say, hey, the, I've seen where they let the chief of police do it for a little bit, or the public works director, or somebody else within your governmental structure that's an agency head, that at least knows their thing. But whoever, I mean, we just don't have that many employees to pick from.
Right, we, we don't have anybody that knows three guys that, you know.
And they probably don't wanna do that, you know what I mean? Like, they would, I mean, they're not here now, they don't, probably don't typically come to the meetings. This isn't their jam, you know?
Yeah, so, so I have a question then, as far, I guess as far as, um, like, advertising, do we wanna go ahead, uh, and just make a motion? So that Kelly can get that underway, so we can go ahead and just get the advertising underway. Oh, but, but first, I'll ask, so did we wanna use the temp agency also to gather candidates to present to us?
I would say not to temp.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Just because they're usually, this is just my opinion, from experience. They're usually temp, like, oh, I'm for a channel, but I could work Tuesday, you know, that kind of thing.
Okay, so, I wanna respect rest time, I leave, so we can, whatever comes after, but for right now, we wanna make a motion to go ahead and advertise.
I think that we should address Kelly, because.
But I, I do think we need to hit the strong advertisement, even if we gotta pay for it.
Paying the voucher, yeah.
To, I mean, to pay for the advertising instead of trying to use everything free, free. I think we need to hit whatever's strong out there and see if we can find somebody. There's gotta be somebody.
And just, just so you all know, people that are in this industry, when they go to look for jobs, they do go to, partly Legal Cities, because it's people in that arena, Foreign Municipal Works Association, people look there because they have that skill set, and they know it's their trade association. Now, they're looking sometimes for other markets, um, but you would be surprised. There may be someone that lives in High Springs who was the city park in somewhere else, and then they're just in retirement, or semi-retirement, and they're, you know, so you never know what you're gonna get. But it's kind of like you wanna look for, uh, you know, someone in a certain field in the place that people in that field go to look. If you ever passed it in something unrelated, probably nobody would see it with the skill set you're looking for.
Mr. Chair. Yep. It's their time for a written hand, and you have recognized me, yes, so thank you.
Sure.
Um, so how does the council feel about doing a salary range? I know forty thousand is the range, is the start pay, but doing the advertisement for, say, forty to fifty thousand, and then put pay based on qualifications?
I think that's a good idea.
Does anybody else have a thought on that?
That sounds good, but I don't have any, anyone to compare it to.
Or just, or they possibly think about it, qualifying it as, like, salary negotiable, and then see what they're, um, because some of these people, if they have a lot of experience, you're not gonna get them for that amount of money. Like, I'm thinking of, um, in Jasper, and their city clerk, there's just a clerk versus city manager, she made fifty-two thousand. Um, Jennings, theirs makes, I think, fifty-five. Like, Springs made, like, sixty, um, I'm trying to think about, I, I mean, you're not comparable to. Uh, in Ranford, she makes around what you're paying here. Um, there's more people to, their structure's different too, because the mayor's a separate office, and they have, um, the, the clerk there has other people that work, that are doing some of the load. Um, here, the person, they just have one person, um, so, it would, negotiable may be a way to not box you in, because you may get somebody that's like, I do it for, you know, I do it for fifty-seven, uh, I really want sixty, but, you know, they, they look at it, it's like forty or fifty, they're like, I'm not doing that.
Do, what about, like, forty K base negotiable, based on, forty K minimum negotiable based on experience? Yep, makes sense?
I don't.
What do you?
We don't matter. Uh, I would say pay based on experience, and you put forty on there, and she want fifty-five, and she's jam up. She might not even answer that. You might say, but they too far off for me.
So just put pay.
I, I, I don't know. But I just see, that's the first thing I thought of when you said that.
Yeah, because they're like, oh, they're not gonna go up another fifteen grand if we would.
Right.
We, yeah, we could just put based on, because I, I know when I was always looking for jobs, I always hated it when there wasn't like a number, but they can just. But they can just call, if they're really interested, they might just call. I mean, I, what do you, what do you all, what do you guys say?
Now, do we have to make a motion to, to, or do we gotta, or just give her?
Or are you just gonna advertise it?
Well.
Just, uh, ask that the city, I mean, you all say yes, we could ask the city to make a motion advertising these places. We wanna use this job description or as our resist, and we'll ask the assistant clerk to put that together, um, and then really, if you wanted to discuss a, like, doing something with a temporary, like, a temporary situation, you could do that, cause it's related, you know, it's related to this, but a section, and then your, basically, your business would be, would be done.
Temporary situation of Kelly?
Yes, right. But.
So it's not inappropriate to ask her to come out of the room and speak with us, or?
I, I, I was just trying to get an idea, do you think you, for some of the stuff that Carrie was doing, like, just to keep it going, would you be able to, you feel like comfortable being able to do it? And if you run into any roadblocks, or there are things that you're like, like, I think from North Florida Professional Services today that you sent me, like, you can feel free to send me stuff, I hope as much as I can, um, and I'm sure that other council members will too, because you all, I feel like you're, have differing levels of engagement, but also, you can be, like, I feel like you feel comfortable asking any of them. That's just what I picked up on.
People that, um, we've been dealing with for a while, those are, it's good as far as, it's different now than when I first started, because now the relationships, and I understand a lot more that's going on, so, glad as you.
So, and, and if it became like a, you know, if it became like super overwhelming as far as, hey, I'm having to do this, and I'm working twice as much, you all could think about that as far as, I mean, an extra compensation.
I was gonna ask.
Had it, had it, maybe even at a different time, cause you wanna kinda see, you know, how much it is, you don't know how much she's gonna have to do, really.
And, and I would suggest, and it might sound corny, but just throw up a red flag, you know, throw up a flag of, I'm knee deep in this stuff, rather than, and I don't know any of the circumstances of why our prior clerk left.
And I.
The factual circumstances, but.
It caught me, I mean, I, I sent, I called, I sent her emails.
But I've only finished my thoughts.
Oh, sorry.
Please.
Go ahead.
Um, it's been recently, several things have become visible that have not been addressed from this office. And I know, I, as a council person, I was not aware at all about the Ulan situation until yesterday, um, with the scope grant with Amanda Diggs, and she, I spoke with her in length today, and that, she's been trying to get through to this office since July fifteenth, and she sent me a trail of emails. Um, so, and I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, if you're overwhelmed, you need to say, I'm overwhelmed. Um, and then the situation where the guy from the cable that presented at our meeting, last meeting down at the community center, he had also been trying to get in since July fifteenth. And he most likely didn't even need to present to the council, it was just, okay buddy, here's your, here's my signature, go for it. And that comes back to training as well, I get that, but ignoring things, if that's the case, I don't know if that's the case, but some of these deadline dates, we've got to hit, or we'll lose the money, and some of the deadline dates from a vendor, if we don't hit, we'll lose that vendor. Does that make sense?
Hundred percent.
For, um, so as, so as far as the advertisement, are we, I guess I'll just say, but floor's open for a motion, I guess.
I'll make, I'll move, we, uh, appoint Kelly as interim clerk, temporarily until we find the clerk.
Good with that, Kelly?
Uh. Full blown?
No, you just keep in the.
I mean, I'm full. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, I don't really do it full time.
But you, but you.
But I'm able to, yeah.
We're, we're advertising the.
The only thing we could do is, um, um, I couldn't sign them, so, yeah.
Well, see, if we.
I'm happy with that.
What I was gonna say is, if we appoint you as interim clerk, then you would have the powers of the clerk, temporarily until we, you know, get a new clerk.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's the purpose of.
And she's agreed with, wait, I'll second.
So have you, okay, so she would be the full-blown clerk first?
First.
First.
For interim.
For an interim period of time.
Only well.
Rock and roll.
Pretty much, until we find somebody, yes.
And y'all just said that includes the signing of checks.
Signing of checks, land development code, so you try, you, you, you tracking that, Kelly?
Yep.
Okay.
To the extent of her abilities and comfort level.
Exactly, yep.
All right.
All right.
We've got a second, so.
Oh, yeah, all of them shot?
Uh.
Hi.
Kelly, what was your name?
I'll make a motion, we move forward with advertising for new clerk.
I'll say that.
Okay, all right, I, and we'll just put, what, based on experience?
Based on experience, I guess, I, unless.
What do y'all?
What do y'all think, what do y'all think, my first, my first thought might not be good, I don't know, I, I just threw that out there.
That or salary negotiable, I mean, that's good, I wouldn't put figures in there.
And then we'll try to include all those places you, uh.
I mean, the only other thing I could, uh, think of is to determine what our top limit would be, if, if we can, you know, what would be, can we do that, cause it.
How do we do, who are we gonna ask for that?
I, I think what we do is, we just see.
Somebody come in, go ask for that.
Yeah, I think we just see what we get.
I think, I, that's what I think, we see what we get.
And then we.
I definitely want somebody qualified for the job.
Right.
Okay, so that's, okay, so do we have a second?
And again, we're, we're all saying the same thing, but send it to the correct pools, you know, Legal Cities versus.
Yeah, not, not.
The friends list. And I know.
Anywhere we can hit a good, anybody thinking of a good one, let's advertise.
A broad.
Put it out there, yeah.
Okay, all right, there's a second.
I said if you did it.
Okay, all right, I'll hear a second.
Uh.
Uh, okay, I'll post a name. Okay, that's the item, I, you're adjourned, you may have a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready to motion to adjourn.
All right, there's a second.
Before that second, do we need to make a couple of meeting dates?
Oh, yes, we need, I think we need two more, I mean, if we wanna, we in keeping with the charter, uh, as far as like the budget, we gotta do two readings, so, I was gonna recommend that Kelly reach out next week and see if everyone's available at some point next week, um, and then.
I'm not.
And then, oh, and all of them.
I'll go on the whole next.
Oh, so maybe we'll do on the following week, and then the one, I guess, that'll probably have to be either the week after that, or the last week of September, which is just those two days.
Are you counting the regular date in there somewhere?
I, I would say we're gonna have two additional ones, we reschedule the regular one, to, or I guess we just keep it, and then just do an extra one.
Keep the regular one, because we all kinda plan around that anyway.
And then just do an extra one, okay, yeah, we can do that, everyone go with that, she'll reach out, I guess the week after the fifteenth, she'll find a visibility for everybody, I mean, worst case scenario would be the, those last two days in September, but, as long as we have enough, I think we need to have two, so.
And I know this doesn't fall under, under the agenda, but I just wanna say again, that three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars for Ulan, we're gonna lose it if we don't get everything in there. She wanted everything by tomorrow, but she's not in the office on Friday, so she said Monday. And there was only a couple of things left from the list, I asked, um, Kelly several times to, um, print out the email, and she hadn't done that yet, but.
And I'm pretty sure Carrie.
Amanda Diggs sent me the email.
Carrie was like chipping away at that, whatever, you guys not counseling her, so say?
No.
Oh, what?
And none of it was chipped away, because she sent me all the emails of the correspondence between the two.
All right, uh, floor looking for a motion to adjourn? Well, you already made a motion, is there a second?
There is one.
Oh, you did say it, okay, uh, I'll hear a second.
Uh.
Okay.
Thank you.
There we go, you're adjourned, right, let's get out of here.
I think you got.
So do you?